Minutes of previous meetings, review some mail, public comment, then look at any old business. And then we have some new business, which might be preliminary slash informal meeting with a party interested in pursuing development of a large solar project in town. Then we have two A and Rs, it's approval not required, one at 264 River Road to create a new lot. Another one at Two Childs Cross Road, which is to split a lot into two lots. Other items is to discuss the staffing needs of the planning board and affordable senior housing. Then we can bring up any business not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to the posting of this meeting. Then we set a date for the next meeting and we could adjourn. So any, anything else should go on the agenda or any?
Nope.
I guess I just always like to move, review of mail down, down after, after new business. So we can get to the A and Rs like earlier in case there's people offering here for that. Alright, so we have two minutes that we want to review and vote on and then we go back to July 10th because we never had finalized those minutes. And then we have the last meeting on September 11th. So if we could look at July 10th's minutes and if anybody wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of July 10th, 2017.
My second.
I'll give a couple of minutes, just I think we should change the date on that at the top of it. It shouldn't say 2016, it should say 2017.
Where's that?
The first sentence.
Oh wow, yeah. You know, that's on there, been on there right along too.
1996.
It's right at the top, but for some reason it's not down below.
Hmm, there's a couple of, just some typos. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? I guess all five of us that are here, we're here at this meeting, so 5-0-0 approved. If you could put a comma there, Paul, when you do a final version, there's.
Okay, yep.
High, comma, zero, comma.
Yep, gotcha.
Alright, and then we're looking at the minutes for September 11th. Same thing, the year should be.
Yep, I'm gonna have to check that out in my.
2017.
My blank here.
Alright, so we, it looks like we approved the minutes of June 5th on both of those.
Yeah, I know it, I see that, that's.
So I think.
That's not right.
No.
I don't know, that must have been those, that's the, this one is that August one. The first one is the 5th is correct. The July one is, is the correct one, but this one is not.
Did we?
Now was this the, would this be, this would be August?
That's what I think.
There was two meetings, there were two meetings, John. Was there one on the 15th and one on the 25th?
In August, we did a meeting on the 7th.
Right, but then there was another meeting after that was the 15th.
Then it was the 15th.
So this should say.
But we don't have the minutes for the 15th one yet, so I think that could be the minutes for the 7th because we did approve them.
So on the 11th, maybe we didn't review any minutes?
No, I think we reviewed the August 7th ones.
And I was there for that one.
Okay, so it's only the 15th that we're missing then?
Correct.
Okay, so August 7th, I'll change that to August the 7th. And it should be, it shouldn't, it should be 5-0-1 because I was not there for that meeting in the voted, you know, the, the vote.
So it wouldn't even been 1 at all, you would've just not have been there?
Well, there was six, six of us at the meeting, so it should have been 5-0-1.
Oh, I see, I see.
I think, I think if, unless somebody else missed that meeting as well, I don't know.
Which one's at the 15th?
Yeah, it should be even 1, yeah. Yeah, on the 11th.
September the 11th, there would have been the minutes of the.
7th, August the 7th.
Yeah.
So that that interim one would be the one that's missing.
So just on the minutes for September 11th, you start out the old business, A, they are requesting. We need to clarify who they are. It was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Condominiums at Chigalove are requesting.
Yes, condos, okay. I was going from the, the agenda and the agenda A, yeah.
Yeah, but obviously you have to.
Chigalove condos are requesting, sure, got it. And I hope I worded that right because they.
Yeah, I think that was the message we were sending.
We wanted to make sure that, that they, they were identical even though the dates were so far off.
Mm-hmm. And then for B, I would just add, Chigalove condos is seeking an A and R to decrease the size of lot 18. Just add the word "the size of."
Size of, okay.
Decrease the size of, because otherwise it makes it look like you're getting rid of lot 18. And increase the size of.
Each one there, yeah.
And increase the size of.
Okay, I'll put that on each one of the three. And then also on number C, make sure that that wording is the way you want it to. There was a question at the meeting, there's two.
That's, that's not my, so the first off of that, the motion, John Baronis moved and Kip seconded the motion to eliminate the Western curb cut on Elm Street. So that's good. They did not add an extra lane on Greenfield Road. It was about, it was only about striping, wasn't an extra, it wasn't adding a lane.
Well, the striping would effectively add a lane, as I understood it, no?
No, no.
Because nobody could go straight, the lane ended right there where it turned, right? Or not?
No, it was to clarify, it was really for clarification purposes only. We, because I looked at the diagrams, we don't have them, but do you remember this?
I didn't have them either.
It was really just for clarification, the lanes are all there.
Okay, so how do you, how do you want to reword that then?
I think the main thing we voted on was the eliminate the curb cut. That other striping thing was just, well, you could just like the sentence before.
I wrote down what John had and that was one of the things, and I know there's a question on it.
Well, then I would say add striping.
And add, add striping?
To the lane on Greenfield Road.
Add striping.
Because that's, that's what it says up in the request also. But we don't want to make it sound like they added an extra lane.
Okay, so you want to add striping on Greenfield Road, which would be a right turn only lane?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take out an extra lane and put in striping.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, that's all they were, and just capitalize Greenfield Road.
Yep.
And that was 7-0-0. I didn't vote against this one, just against Chigalove.
Oh, you didn't, okay, 7-0-0. For some reason I had 6-0-1 in my minutes. Let me just check here. Can you check? I'll change that, because it's in here, it says. Okay.
Oh, two later.
Yep, okay, it's alright. We'll correct it.
You might just call him this, this, Walker, Walker.
Is it spelled correctly though?
No.
I don't know.
Her first name's not spelled correctly, her last name is, but her first name's.
Who's, whose name?
Annalee. Oh, that's all one word, Annalee.
But it's also.
Okay, I, I had it.
But I just called him this.
Somebody gave it to me as two, two word, two names, so.
Yeah, yeah. I just called him this, he put on her, I think he signed it.
Sometimes it hasn't been here.
She did sign in.
No, this is August 15th.
Did she sign into, you're back on July then, right?
July, no, 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 this would have been September, just our last meeting.
Okay.
You nailed her last name, I'm pretty sure, so that's.
Yeah, we've had it right in some past reports. Alright, do we have a, did you already, did you make a motion on it?
I didn't, but I will, I make a motion, we accept the minutes of September 11th with the changes. As amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? 5-0-0. Thank you.
Okay.
Staying on top of these.
Appreciate it.
Now, who, who moved the minutes, I'm sorry, I didn't write that down.
And.
Kip.
Rachel seconded.
Okay, I should just put that down here and not change it, you know?
And I should say for the record that we have a quorum, five planning board members. Rachel, John, Kip, Paul, Max, thank you for coming. At this point at the beginning of the meeting, I'd like to ask if there's anybody that has a public comment about something that's not on the agenda tonight. Anybody have a public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to old business, we have none. New business, as I said, let's switch the A and Rs and put them up front. So we'll go to, actually, let's check if there is anybody from, is there anybody that is interested in pursuing a development of a large solar project in town? So I believe that was actually left over from last.
Okay, so.
An item, because we actually discussed that at the last meeting.
We did, we did.
And they did not make a plan to come back. So that actually is checked, we didn't, that was actually old business that.
Okay.
We have nothing to hear about, good. So, A and R on 264 River Road, is someone here for 264 River Road? Hey, Dan, come on up and tell us about it. Do we have a, I'm sure we do have a plan here. 264 River Road, look at that. Oh, we like straightforward ones. Are you, are you gonna guarantee that, or are you just saying? Alright, so yeah, just give us a quick, so we're up on the.
Yep, no problem, no problem.
So this is just close to River Road, close to Hillside Road? Just north of Hillside, alright.
So you're creating two lots out of this, out of, or three lots in, in effect?
One, this one's already been created.
Okay.
So we signed up on that one.
Create lot A is what the application says.
Okay, alright, good.
So where's lot A?
This one was done last year, a couple of years ago.
Okay, yep, alright.
And so what's the frontage on that?
Uh, 180 plus 48.
Oh, there's 30, there's 30 here, then 150.
150, and there's just like a count for the time, I don't think that counts, but it's on a, whatever.
Yeah. So it's two, two, two.
Yeah, it's like almost 232. I don't know if you dropped off a CD bar.
No, it's not in here, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so the.
Okay, so that can be put with the.
That goes in here with the.
Yep.
Do you have any idea why they have such a drastic jog in it?
Well, this was, this was the old 1911, and then when they redid it in 1983, this is where they.
They just took it?
That's where they did it to. I don't, I don't, I don't really know why, they didn't just go east.
Yeah.
I don't know. Yeah, it was kind of weird.
So in 1983, they didn't widen the road as far as, at that point, is what you think?
No, they just stopped it there for some reason.
Yeah.
This is on the, this is on, oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah, the river's over there.
Yeah, opposite side of it, is it? So the name of the applicant, Penita Weeks, 264 River Road, and she signed it. And that, the applicant is the property owner.
Yeah, yeah, she did.
Penita Weeks. Map 136, lot in parcel seven, it's residential agriculture. Creation of a lot, this was received on September, in the town, September 22nd, fees of $150 paid. It's 100, 100 plus 50 dollars for creating a new lot.
That, that was on a previous plan I did like a year, like a year and a half ago. So that's already been sold off.
So, so this is already sold off? So their property was this piece?
Yeah, exactly.
This is the new line?
This is, this is the new line.
Got it.
Yeah.
So it's creation of lot A from, from here?
Yep.
We got this angle over here, and we got that little thing. I'm not sure if we even, I mean, that's, they're kind of stuck with that, so it's not their fault, I guess, anyway.
Well, I think it's over there, you know, it's supposed to be about 60, 60 degrees. So, it's not 21st, not 21st, it's.
So it's less than 90, but it's, it's.
75.
The other thing we have is we don't want small little things like this, but, but it seems like you're kind of forced to do this. This isn't your.
Yeah.
Choice necessarily.
Well, no, it's gonna access.
It could have accessed, well, we could have dropped it right straight down here, there's something there.
Then he wouldn't have got, right, then he wouldn't have got the 200 frontage though.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, he's gonna access it through here anyway.
So it is accessible, this is a, it's a hill, or?
It's all flat, no, no, that's all at open field. It's all, it's all flat, it's a field, not an acre.
And then you got more than 200 over there, and you got plenty of acres over there.
Nor, it's a very, yeah, they're like right there, they're on like a couple hundred yards down the road on the opposite side.
Before the culvert.
And it's a, the plan states.
The culvert's like right here.
Right.
The plan states endorsement of an A and R plan does not certify the lot shown on, on the plan qualify as building lots under the zoning by law. Oh, so that's, that's what we require, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Any questions, any issues?
But in other words, so you can't avoid this by dropping that down and bringing this over? Because that, this property then would start to, set the point.
You don't want to do it too close to the barn here. Because they want to keep this, they want to keep that with the barn.
But what, this is just, that's just grass, that's just.
It's all grass, yeah.
That's just the side of the road.
It's all, it's all field from like, basically from, actually, basically from here up.
It isn't like going down the road, you'd see that.
I know, it just happens that there's a pin back here.
It's just the weird angle, is that?
That's just the road layout, you know?
Alright, I guess we don't, we don't need to clean that up, I guess, it's just the way it is, yeah.
Yeah, it's just the way it is.
It's just something to talk about later on.
Yeah, it's a headache for some other group.
Yeah, that's right.
I, I just think that it would have been, you'd have an option there.
Like this original line is over here, so.
Right.
You mess up all the, whatever you got for frontage, but just to make it aesthetic and.
Not aesthetic, just.
Well, you don't have the measurements here, but that's probably just 200, isn't it? Probably when they built it, when they did this one, they must have done it just to get the.
I think they made that 210, you know, a little bit over 200, but.
Because why didn't they, back then, why didn't they make this?
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it, it met the zoning, it was over 200.
Right, 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 right.
Anyways, they're gonna access.
This is the new line anyway.
Yeah.
And this is wide enough up here, so.
Yeah, yeah.
No issues, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the A and R.
I'll second it.
Endorse.
Endorse.
Endorse the A and R.
To endorse the A and R, so. I gotta have a vote?
Oh, sorry.
I almost said so voted, I did second it.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Abstain, sorry, thanks, Paul.
I did that just because when I was looking at the notes from the last meetings, Kip, Kip either made the motion and Rachel seconded it, or Rachel made it and Kip seconded it, so I said, well, I'll second it this time.
There you go. Getting good.
Just to make up the monotony.
I mean, if, you, do you want to look in the, at the, at the angles and stuff? I think it's within, but it's also, I think, it's a. What do you call it, it's kind of, the state's fault, not, not theirs as much.
What, you got, do two, two paper copies and, let me do those two there?
Yeah, he's cutting down, he's not giving us as many as he used to.
Today is October the 2nd, 2017. Max, you want to sign?
I'm good. What do you mean, three?
Yeah, I'm gonna have four, I think, I think. I'll use it for four. It's getting hot in here.
We should turn on our expensive air conditioner.
Have we got one?
Beautiful, this is perfect.
Well, we need to open a window before you turn on the.
Windows aren't open here.
The heat must be on, that's why it's warm, yeah. I'm not putting the heat on in my house here. Against my daughter's best, best attempts here.
This one only has three.
That one only has three.
This one only has three.
Yeah, Rachel and I need to sign, yeah. Is the date on it, yeah? There you go, you gonna take them, or?
Sure.
See, get it. Leave the mail R in one and we'll keep two copies for the. Planning board and building inspector get one and assessors, I guess, gets the other. So that is a good question, because now like the assessors have to get notified of this. Is that, that happens at our level or at the filing level, I don't know.
Or, or the APRA gets recorded.
APRA gets recorded.
Yeah. Alright, you were, you seemed to be right, Dan, on that one, then it was pretty straightforward. Thank you. Another.
What is your name, sir?
My name's Alex Herschel, I do.
Are you, are you, you're just in the public for something, or?
Uh, yeah, um, I actually, I go to Yamass and I need to go to a planning board meeting for a class.
Okay. Could you just write your name on a piece of paper for me then?
Oh, yeah.
That'd be great, thank you.
Is this, is that required?
No, I just put it down as a, as a guest, that's all I do.
I, I would, I would be a little wary of that, to tell you the truth. Because I think our meetings are open to the public and they don't need to actually say who they are, so I don't want to start saying we're gonna.
Unless they speak up though.
Right, if they, if they speak, if they get involved in.
If you're just observing, then don't worry, don't worry about it.
That's a.
Okay, that's fine.
That's a discrimination thing, I don't want to be.
That's what?
You might need proof he came.
That's right, this is.
It'll be in the record.
If you need that, we can sign your. But yeah, these, these.
Okay, okay.
Public meetings, people don't have to announce themselves, they don't have to show IDs, they don't have to do any of that.
But they do, if they speak up.
Yeah, if they speak up, they have to.
But I attend a couple of meetings where I can have to sign in.
Yeah, people generally sign in, but that's okay, if they don't, I don't, I don't have a problem with it either way.
I mean, we can double check it, but I hope, I hope these are open meetings and you don't have to identify yourself if you're just here to observe. So now we have a, another A and R, Two Childs Cross Road.
Oh, that's handy.
There's an application from William.
Melnick.
Oh, W, William W. Melnick.
Oh, that was my confusion, it was the W.
W M E L, I'm like, what the heck, alright, thank you. For Two Childs Cross Road, Land Survey of Daniel Warner. And they proposed to divide existing houses on property to be on their own lots, one and two. And it looks like this was stamped at the town by September 28th and a check of $100 because you're not creating a new lot, or divide existing houses on property to be on their own lots? Well, let's see, let's see if we're making a new one or not. I don't, I don't think I have plans, oh, there they are, Rachel!
Are you keeping them, Rachel?
Hiding them over there. I hope that's it, because that's, it seems to be the only one.
Yeah, those plans are bigger.
Childs Cross. We're at those and we'll share this one.
Take the top?
Alright, so we're on the corner of Greenfield, which is Route 3 and 10 and Childs Cross Road?
Yeah.
So where are we, what are we doing here?
Is, is there's a bunch of structures on the property. And this one's, was the apartment house, or was that a single family that, other house? Huh?
The single, there.
Yeah, there's two single family houses and a bunch of barns out here. And he wants to sell his son, whatever, this, this house here. And the only, the only thing that doesn't really conform to zoning, although I think, depending when they were built, chapter 41, section 81L, it says you can divide if you got more than one building on the lot. And the reason we kind of made it a little kicked like this down is because the septic for this house comes out here, goes down here, over here, and the septic field for this house is here.
Oh. You guys following?
Not yet.
He keeps saying, he's pointing in there, but this is a little.
Yeah, this, this, this weird little.
This jog down here, the septic is like down here.
This is a septic plan and the septic line for this house comes out here and goes down right along here, over here, and then into the field.
I see.
So that's why we had to do that.
You want the septic on with the house?
Yeah, yeah, just be a lot simpler that way.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
This is the only new line? Which is the new line, this one?
Well, this line going through the middle.
Right.
Yeah.
We just want to separate the houses and all the other structures and.
So it's just under an acre and a half then, from the looks.
Yeah, it's supposed to be 60,000, right?
Yep. Yeah.
So just, this one that goes through the, the structures there, that exists?
This fine has been here for 150 years, with that open bay. I don't know why they don't tear part of it down, but that's not my dis-
It's still just part of the estate? It's just part of the estate, it's still in the estate, yeah.
Alright, but we're not, that line exists, that's, I just wanna make sure that we're not mailing a new line.
That's where we used to get our eggs.
Oh, really?
How we ride our bikes down here and call their-
Yeah, I don't know why they ever built it like that.
Ice cream.
So what's our, uh, what's our frontage here? It's 191 plus 26?
Yep, and then this one's got whatever, a couple of the frontage anyway.
Oh, so Child, Childs Cross-
Is that an official term?
It's an official term.
That counts as the frontage, is Childs Cross.
Well, I'd say this is probably actually your main frontage, just on Childs Cross, which is 423, and this is, you know, probably all short, uh, Greenfield Road.
But I'm wondering, now, this, this, all of this property, the frontage was, was Childs Cross, so now you're creating new frontage on Greenfield Road, so it's not on Childs Cross anymore.
No, no, this one's not, but, but they have, uh, what is that, 191?
91 plus 26, so it's over 200.
Yeah. Yeah, and that was, this was the only weird thing I thought, was having to do that, but they're, they're existing, the septic's there.
You have the, you don't have the distances between here?
I split the difference, um, I split the distance here at this point, I think it was 10 and 10 or something like that, and then I made a parallel, but, but then I couldn't keep going parallel, because then this septic fine comes like right here, so I kept it a little bit, just, I just kept that septic fine around to that part.
Well, does this line become the back of their lot, then?
Side.
Well, I think this would be the back.
It's the side, but the frontage is on Childs Cross Road, does that make that the rear of the lot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just as a curiosity.
Yeah, 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 front and that'd be the back line, back line.
Yeah, I guess it would.
No, that's okay, I mean, I don't-
Yeah, no, I, I- I, I ask those questions all the time, because I'm not sure sometimes.
Sure, sure, yeah, because it's 25 in the back, isn't it?
That's what I was kinda-
Right.
And 10 on the sides and 25 on the back. There probably isn't, from the looks of it.
I think there's only, uh, that nearest point, there's like-
You could just move that barn though. You could just move that barn a little bit, couldn't you?
Hmm.
Like you did that.
I, I bet, I bet.
And I don't know if they moved Childs Cross Road, they tore it down and moved it.
Oh, no.
But I wonder if that burn came off from trigger both. They went over the bank on the other side and wore sodden up.
Uh-huh, okay.
This is our A.
Yeah.
So it's actually, um, 10, 10 feet, um, rear, rear and side.
On the back? Oh, it is 10 feet, okay, that's good, then you're all set.
Front is 30, but rear and side, so that, it looks like you got-
Stand would be fine.
Yep, you're good.
60. Oh, so that just barely makes you 60, then?
Yeah, yeah.
And then this, this, because you get all that, you got two points.
Yeah, it's just, you know, you wanna miss the pool and all that stuff, and then, th- this is all worth, you know, not worth, you know, once you get down past here, there's not, I mean, it's all wet.
Wet and broken and stuff.
Yeah, you wouldn't come down there anyways, it was a little bit of a trouble, so, you know, it didn't, didn't seem to make any sense to try and split the areas.
Oh, as long as you made the 60 there, you're good.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't remember ever making a, a new, new frontage on a new road, but, I don't know, if that doesn't matter.
Well, originally they had their frontage here too.
Yeah, I think-
Originally they had both, both that frontage.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, does like the address has to change then for this, you gotta?
It doesn't matter.
He probably has his own address anyway.
I think it does.
What's he address figure or something?
Because there are two houses.
What's he address figure or something?
383?
Yeah, this is 383.
Oh, so the house already has it.
Already has it, it's already housed.
Oh, I see, so when it's, when the house is, yeah, okay.
Cut him loose.
Yeah, cut the kids loose.
Alright, and then that angle's-
Exactly, well, that's, that's, that's what they do.
Oh, there's the, is that Amtrak? Just thought I heard Amtrak.
It's kinda late for Amtrak, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Questions, comments?
That's great.
Any, um, someone wanna make a?
I make a motion, we approve the A and R.
Endorse.
Endorse.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Second.
Okay.
Give Max a chance to second it, somebody's gonna get their name on this thing.
You wanna, you wanna second it? Okay, I'll put, I'll change to the Max.
Paul's getting, Paul's like Kip and Rachel, pay Kip and Rachel. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Aye, zero, zero. Um, you, it, it should be a, um, alright, I got a little confused, so it is, it's a hundred dollars and then 50 for each new lot, so there is a new lot, so it should be 150, and it says, says fee paid 150, but then it says the check they got was only a hundred dollars. Do you remember, you know?
Check for the 100. They asked you, it should give me 100.
Because on the back it says that-
Because it's a new lot.
It says it's cost 150.
Rachel, please, don't worry, I'll take care of it.
So they might, maybe they'll send you a bill or something, I don't know, but-
Just go to the town hall in the morning.
Right. But this is just like the one before, you had one lot, you, you made it into two, so there's an extra lot being built, so it should be 150.
And I said the land left, and you got left out back, that's all, and the APR, so we couldn't touch it. It's, it's still on all this, but it's all in APR, so it's where the, this is where that APR line goes.
That was already existed, yes.
Well, well, it's on the same deed, but this is all in APR, what's left over here, that's 6.5 acres.
Alright, here, we'll sign this, you wanna take it to the, uh, you take it to the court?
Yeah, alright, thanks, guys.
Okay.
No, those are your two easiest ones ever, I think.
That's right, that's right.
I don't know, we getting better, or are they gonna?
I know, neighbor.
So who's moving? Who's doing what? Are you just, you just separating your house from your kids?
Just planning to see how it goes.
Yeah.
Where they go, what go. Katie is up in there.
You know, like, they say kids are like cows, and you should know.
Kids are what?
Kids are like cows. You keep putting that silage in the bracket, they're gonna keep coming back.
55 years, I never heard that saying.
Really?
And a lot, and a lot of cows, too, did silage.
So what's Katie doing now? What's Katie doing now?
Bring him down to my house, I'm like, you smell that?
Okay, I don't hear whatever.
What? That's disgusting, I love, I love that stuff.
Yep. Yep, yep, yep.
Man, they gotta sign them all, huh?
Why not?
We just kept them.
We got excited.
We were paid by the signature.
Yeah, because we wanted to make sure Bill had the right name for that check he's writing.
Four of them there, or something.
There you go. Yeah, just put a different number on each check, though.
Yeah, this is good.
That's gonna be good, good to get an early night after a while. That's right, and what's the date of the next meeting gonna be? Anybody know the next date? I know it'll be November.
We're getting better. What year are we in?
2017, isn't it? For a couple more months anyways.
We're a little off.
When we get old, 55.
Yeah.
Well, when you get old, you can tell it.
How many, uh?
74.
Wait, how many, wait, you gotta separate them, we got, we keep, give him, uh, the Mylar and two, and then we should keep the others, yeah.
We signed so many.
I know, so, so the Mylar, the, that one goes to the court, right, and then we'll give you two, because we have a lot, and then we keep some for the offices here.
Yeah, don't we keep two or something, or?
Yeah, we have enough, I'll keep three, because-
Keep three.
The health, the, uh, building inspector sometimes keeps a several one, but I think we're in the same office, we just need more.
I know, I know.
Our new building inspector might be more- What is his name? What's the new building?
Kyle?
Kyle.
Scott.
He was working in Northampton most recently, he knows the area. Have a good night.
Take it easy. Yeah, good seeing you.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Now, they're gonna put all the candles on the cake, or?
1 equals 60 or 70.
Yeah, I gave, I gave, this guy, a friend of mine, this was years ago, he turned 60, I, I put, I gave him a birthday card and it said, it said, "I see a glow in the distance, oh, that's just your birthday cake."
Have a good night.
Yep.
Yeah, so we got mail here, we gotta approve mailing, and mailing expense of 117 dollars, 94 cents. Payable to, I don't know, but we must have mailed stuff over the past, I think it's like a quarterly bill or something.
And who's the bill? Who, whose advertisement was it?
I think it's several, I think it's several things, this is like, it doesn't have just one.
Yeah, but I mean, is that, don't they-
Oh, data build, the 926.
But doesn't that come out of that revolving money, or doesn't it?
Department postage meter, it's for the meter, so yeah, so it's a split of different things, so it comes out of our, um-
Revolving fund, but, do people pay for that in the, in their fees?
Right, and if there was something that we had to pay for, then it comes out of our. There's, um, some more, um, trainings coming up, did everybody get the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative, and I, I think I sent it out, I highlighted one or two, can anybody make the ones that aren't gonna be in Greenfield?
That's the one I'd like to go to.
Where, what is that one?
That's in Greenfield, and it's called, I'll tell you, Wilmer is the guy, and it is, where is it? Up here, right there, Planning with Community Support. Does that sound good?
Planning with Community Support.
And what, was there gonna be one here in this area somewhere?
That's, in this area, that's in our-
No, I mean in South Deerfield, I thought there was gonna be one, no?
No, I think, I think there's the two in Greenfield, and the other one is, um, Roles and Responsibilities of Planning and Zoning Boards.
Oh, what?
Would be really good, and that's, uh, November 29th, it's a Wednesday night, 6 to 8.
Okay, in Greenfield?
That's in Greenfield. Then there's one that, um, I don't know who highlighted this, but it's a Site Plan Review Workshops, um, but that one's Sherborne, what the heck, Sher- Sherborne? But then this other one, how to read a site plan, this is in Springfield, that's, uh, October 12th. So if you can, but this one in Roles and Responsibility is starred here, I think Pat Smith and the others would like us, that'd be a good one. And then, it costs, these workshops, $30, but we can take that out of our thing. And then there's the, um, this one just came out, I think, recently, Short Term Residential Rentals, it's about, um, it's like Airbnbs, I think a lot of towns are having issues with that, so the FERCog is kinda getting together to talk about, zoning bylaws, building codes, best practices, things like that, so hopefully, um-
When is that?
Hopefully our, maybe, like, our building commissioners should maybe go to that. Other mail is, uh, other neighbors telling us what's on their agendas. So a couple towns, as we know, are having these, uh, if you read the paper, this one is from Town of Conway, uh, they're considering adding a section to their bylaws about temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments. I think a bunch of towns are doing that, or at least proposing it.
Now, ours fell through here, right? It's not happening?
Yeah, I don't think we've, I don't think it's been proposed, has it?
Well, they, we approved the building, the, the site plan for it.
You don't mean the moratorium?
No, I, I thought it-
This is about a moratorium so that no one could do them. We, we never had that.
Never had a moratorium.
We never had a moratorium.
Right, well, I was saying, and also, if I remember, I heard somewhere that the one we approved to be up here on the Whately-Dearfield line is not gonna happen.
Correct.
That's-
We haven't heard anyone.
Yeah, I don't, have them come to the planning board, but alright.
Kirket is saying it's, it's, uh, it's, it's long gone. We approved the-
Right, so it's still, so it's zoned for that, so.
Yeah.
Upper floor apartments. Parking reductions, alright, so I don't think there's anything. Parking spaces. Setbacks. Animal control. Alright, it's kinda your standard stuff. This is, um, uh, Wa- Whately is, um, somebody's applying to, for a large ground-mounted solar facility there on, um, 134 Christian Lane. That's down, yeah. Alright, so that's the mail. Um, I think we actually discussed staffing needs of the planning board last meeting, and the office, Wendy, said they're moving forward on that. Affordable senior housing, we really need to have a joint, I think we're gonna wait for, get a staff person, really, to help us move that along, probably. Anybody else have any comments about the items on the agenda, or anything else?
Not at all.
Should we set a date for the next meeting?
Set the number 6, sound okay?
First Monday of November.
It's not a voting day, I hope, is it? Isn't, when's, um-
Oh, I don't know.
Sometimes the first Tuesday is the voting day, but I don't know, do we have anything to vote on here?
I haven't heard anything.
It's an off year, it's not the-
I know, sometimes, sometimes I think some towns have like special elections, I don't know, you don't know?
We haven't.
We haven't talked about it.
Ours usually happen in the spring, don't they? The special meetings.
No, it would happen anytime, but no, we don't have any.
Alright, so unless we hear anything else, and anything, otherwise, let's schedule it for November 6th, and on the agenda at this point, um, is there anything we wanna be proactive about to put on the agenda?
Just give ourselves a break, if there's not much to do, just do it.
I'd be happy to do that, and I'd like to just keep pushing the town to try to get in, get an advertisement out there, do you know if anything's, have you heard anything going on the past couple weeks about that?
About?
About a planning person? Alright, next meeting, November 6th, 7 o'clock, here at the town offices, anything else? Do we have a motion?